Okay, let's meet our candidates. The opening statements will begin. Next, Clayton Corey.
All right, is this on? Thank you for being here, everyone. Thank you for enduring the heat to come out here. I know some of you wanted to watch it live streaming on YouTube, but I think it'll be available a little week later. Thanks to the Chamber and the FHCCA, a wonderful organization for our back pocket here in town. My name is Clayton Corey. I remember visiting Fountain Hills from Scottsdale about 10 years ago with my dogs. I would always come and walk around the fountain. And, gosh, that was 10 years ago. Now I've been resident here for eight and a half years. And I wrote down here, I definitely drank the Fountain Hills Kool-Aid. I fell in love with it, and I got involved very quickly. I met so many passionate volunteers in a variety of service groups, many part of the FHCCA. We're 24,000 residents strong, we're ranging in ages, backgrounds, professions, and this town really thrives on the contributions from its residents. Everyone has a different perspective and a different strength. I have some involvement in town with different organizations and also planning and zoning. I currently serve as a commissioner of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've spent five years there and a year and a half with the sanitary district. So we focus on land use, we focus on cleaning our water, recycling our water. Professionally, I work for a large healthcare company. IT infrastructure, incident management, problem management, behind the scenes kind of stuff. If elected, I commit to community engagement, maintain transparency in policies that reflect the majority of our residents. And I will strive to find common ground and do what's in the best interest of our residents. So again, thank you for being here today. This is a packed house, and I look forward to sharing more of my pleasure.
Thank you, Clayton. Next, Councilmember McKam.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming. Thank you to the FHCCA and the Chamber for giving us this opportunity to talk with you tonight. I've lived in Fountain Hills for about 23 years, and I absolutely love it. Love it a lot better than I do in California. And when I began serving on council about three and a half years ago, I had absolutely no idea what I was getting into, and a magazine. But you know, after three and a half years, I really, really like it. While it's been a little bit chaotic this last year, I think that, you know, beyond all that, we live beyond all that. And we make decisions at the best of our ability balancing the interests and representing our community as a whole. I'm a strong, dedicated leader who brings a lot of wealth, legal experience and knowledge, and integrity to my position. I serve on nine different boards and committees value-wise. And I do that because it helps me develop strong relationships with important stakeholders in town. And it also helps me to make significant contributions to our town policies for the benefit of our community. I hope my term from council has shown that I am accountable. Listen, I really seriously spend hours doing my homework before making a decision. I'm making partial, nonpartisan decisions that I feel are in the best interest of our community and not the unparted minds. Simply put, I'm excited to be running again for a second term, seriously, I am. I would like to move us forward into our current future, respect our community values, and have a strong sense of community and support our hometown character. So thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you. Next, Rick Watts.
Good evening. My name is Rick Watts, and I'm here today to ask for your support, your vote, and donations to support my campaign. I've been a resident of Fountain Hills for 35 years. My background includes being a business owner, contractor for more than 40 years, licensed here in Arizona as well as several other states. I have an extensive background in construction, facility management, mechanical contracting and energy. But most importantly, I have an in-depth understanding of planning, forecasting, finances, managing the budgets of small organizations up to and including large public corporations. I currently serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission, where you can see firsthand how I research and consider each issue, always listening and respecting to your input. I'll give you a couple of examples of how I vote. I voted against the mountainside apartment project based upon vocal opposition of the local residents. I listened to the residents. I was instrumental in development and strength by a stringent ordinance managing community housing, also known as suburban living zones, thus protecting your neighborhoods. I voted against the target apartment complex due to the developer's flat refusal to make any changes, changes that were simply necessary to meet our town building codes, no more, no less. And I continue to this day to fight for the reasonable implementation and sensible management, not prohibition, of 5G, 5G broadband, safeguards that are necessary to protect your property values, and the list goes on. Having retired a couple of years ago, I began to attend the town council meetings and recognized quickly that my experience could benefit the council by bringing a deeper understanding of management and finances to the council, helping the council to focus on its real task. That's representing and supporting the town residents based on facts and data, not emotions. I'm a strong advocate of circle leadership. I'm on the Neighborhood Property Owners Association and also the chairman of the Committee of Architecture, the NPOA. It oversees the architectural aspects of over 4,400 properties in town. I'm a trail host of the Southern Concernancy. I'm a recent graduate of Fountain Hills Leadership Academy. I've said it before, and I'll say it again, Fountain Hills is pretty nice, but does have a few challenges. I'd like to help address those challenges and resolve them without compromising any of the beauty, charm, small-town feeling that Fountain Hills is known for or why.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Corbin.
Thank you. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the Cultural and Civil Affairs in Fountain Hills for the opportunity to be here. And I'll tell you that one of my qualifications. For 30 years, I worked for two Fortune 500 companies as a district sales manager. Why is that significant? Because the most important thing I learned in all of that was that listening to my customers and responding to their needs and their problems really brought something home, and that is that I could provide solutions to these problems. In doing so, they became more successful. As a result of that, I became more successful too. Also, I owned and operated my own small business. And what that taught me is the hard work behind owning your own small business and the competitive attitude and strength it takes to stay in the market at a competitive price with a competitive product while solving customers' problems. Why is that unique? I know I can bring that same problem-solving attitude here to Fountain Hills. What do I believe in? I believe in traditional American values, which simply means that everyone has a First Amendment right to speak, whether in town council or anywhere else. And I support that and applaud those who brought back the invocation before each town council meeting. And to tell you, I'll tell you another thing, quite frankly. My second interest and strength is bringing back public safety in a stronger way, particularly about residential neighborhoods for one. Strong, stable economic development with small businesses, and economic vitality by roads and structures. First, that project's safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the question segment of the evening. Question number one, and before we begin that, I just want to remind the candidates, we have two minutes for the opening statements. Questions, response time will be limited to 90 seconds. Question number one. According to U.S. Census data, the town's population was 22,489 in 2010 and 23,887 in 2020. The median age is heavily skewed towards retirees at 59.7 years old. The nearest metropolitan area grew from 4,192,887 residents in 2010 to 4,845,832 residents in 2020 with a median age of 36.7. The voter approved general plan lists a variety of strategies aimed at increasing the population in order to sustain existing and future commercial businesses. What do you believe is the ideal population for Fountain Hills? And what strategies would you employ to achieve the goal of increased population as set forth by the general plan? Next, Clayton Corey.
Thank you. So, back when the town was initially planned, the plan was for about 70,000 residents here. And that, I don't think everybody realizes, and that changed pretty quickly. And the law sizes were changed so that we would kind of cut that in half. But what happened was, while we were developing for 70,000 residents, we started developing wide streets, a lot of commercial properties. So when we cut that in half, we ended up with all these extra commercial properties to support a lot more people, but we're never going to get there. So I think one of the advantages that we have now is shifting and converting a lot of the commercial properties that we have that are either vacant, empty, or there's just an empty lot, and convert those into some mixed use that a lot of the younger families actually like. The younger families, the taste has changed, the finances have changed, and they're looking for different things than my parents were looking for, different things that I was looking for. So we have a lot of opportunity in this community to convert and change some of the older commercial properties into mixed use. And that also is going to bring vibrancy into the community where they can live and shop and work very close to their homes. So I think that's definitely an area of opportunity for us.
Thank you. Next is Rick Watts.
Can we have 10 minutes instead of 90 seconds? I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I think it starts with that, we've got to recognize that first and foremost, we all moved to this town for one reason, and that's because it's a family-friendly, upscale community. And I think once we own that, then that starts the process. I do think that we can grow the town from our 24,000, 25,000 to something less than 30,000 old by the proper use of planning and zoning, rezoning in certain areas, looking at high density. Some of those high-density areas are going to be driven by commercial. The commercial aspect are going to provide higher income for those employees, helping the talent group design, work through, maybe developing a co-op to increase their bottom-line margins by reducing their overhead. Think about the difference between fixed costs and variable costs. That will help promoting the talent group to be able to take advantage of some of those issues. I do think that in the long term, we ought to also look at the state trust plan and figure out how we can entice two or three developers to co-op and buy that one and develop it. That's a huge undertaking. And I think we need the expertise in our town staff to be able to have that conversation with CEOs of corporations of our size to be able to provide the financing to do that. It takes some initiative on our part. It takes the experience of a leader to be able to have the conversations comfortably with a CEO to be able to say, here's the benefits, here's how we'll support you. Developing incentives and helping the Avenue of the Fountains, developing something with the Platte 208 is another option. Those folks, 100%, will need to agree on something before they do anything. We need to figure an enticement to help them change their mindset.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Corbin.
Well, you know, I think going back to the Old Testament, I might do that. Because in Job 12:12, wisdom is to the ages, and there are many of days. 59.7 years is not a bad age. That's our average age here in Fountain Hills. Let's be proud of that. Let's grow around that. Our average median income is $100,317. That's not bad either. We're one of the wealthiest communities around on that. And I will tell you that all of us moved here for a reason. It may not have been affordable housing. It may have been our last, best dream home and dream opportunity. We have an unbelievable amount of volunteerism here in Fountain Hills. And so a lot of our costs are held down because of that, and everybody participates. That's the unique thing. This Fountain Hills community is the real gem. It's a gem of the desert, and we need to maintain a lot of that. Now, to answer the question about how to grow, 26,000 is a pretty good growth comping. How do we do that? We've got available land downtown, plenty of empty lots. There's opportunities to go back to that issue of the state trust plan. Now, in 2016, it didn't work out so well because Elman, unfortunately, was not the right choice for a building, and they stopped paying. But the opportunity is there again. We should look at it, we should look at all opportunities. How about that new Disagreement Center? Amazing, huh? New opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McKam.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Yes, our population is at about 24,000 right now, which hasn't grown. And lack of growth affects, are a conundrum, vitality and sustainability of our future. But often, people go, we don't want to learn the population. But population growth doesn't have to be bad or incompatible with our town. We have a beautiful town, a fast-growing age in our community. You know, we have to look towards the next generation to be our future leaders. We need younger families to support our schools. We need younger professionals here to support, we have innovative new businesses. And we also need to get more growth and more business in the town so that we can have more population and growth. A lot of people have asked about having Trader Joe's or Shprouds here. However, you know, they don't build unless there is population growth and not stagnation. So I think that we need to still attract businesses so that we can have growth in population and be more sustainable. And also, I think our population is going to be smaller growth because it will be within our natural boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to question number two. Fountain Hills is one of the safest cities in Arizona and enjoys very low crime levels compared to other neighboring cities. What is your plan for working with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to ensure that both violent crimes and property crimes remain low in our community? We will start with Matthew Corbin.
Thank you. I think, unfortunately, although we have three, maybe the best sheriffs, officers here in Fountain Hills, I think the contract, in my opinion, was left a lot on the table. And I think we left about $3.5 million on the table. That's unfortunate. Rio Verde and Goldfield and Tonto Verde pay about that much for sheriff's officers. And that's kind of a problem. But we can renegotiate that contract in 2026. What we'd like to look at, what we should look at, is more residential patrolling of the individual residential neighborhoods and get our focus our attention on that. And why should we do that? Because small crime starts with vandalism, graffiti, and that type of thing. It grows gradually. If we had patrols in the neighborhoods as a regular routine, some of that can be held down, and we can keep it the same great community we have here in Fountain Hills. We should always look at, and I'm not saying I want to go there, but we should always keep in our back pocket the possibility of our own police department. There are other councils, can you get this? We should study it. I'm not recommending it, I'm just saying it's an option. So those are the options and possibilities, and I would encourage everyone to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McKam.
Thank you. Are you aware that we live in one of the safest communities nationwide and throughout Arizona? Captain Cracher reports and prices with federal reports every month. And we have, again, we have a very, very low concrete rate. And I don't think it's appropriate to make that up or make a problem that doesn't exist. As for our Maricopa County Safety Contract, I worked on that. We are getting a $600,000 reimbursement. In fact, we recently just received $300,000 of it. We have services we don't pay for. We have helicopter teams, SWAT teams that we don't pay for, and rescue teams. We also have dedicated officer that helps the sheriffs out when they need help with people, mental health people, so that they can help them find a place to live or go for their safety and not be arrested instead. And look at our fire department. We just brought in a brand-new dedicated fire department, and they also contribute to our safety. We just had a fire, an ashtray fire. They put it out within an hour. I would say that with these combined services, that we are one of the safest communities to live in. And I want to thank them, our emergency responders, for making it that way so that we can feel safe no matter where we go around town. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rick Watts.
First, I think I want to acknowledge that the MCSO really does do a good job. And we are one of the safest communities in the state, if not the country. Where I think the failing is in our ability to negotiate contracts. I think that our leadership let us down. We've had a 65% increase in the base price from 2018 till today, when the Consumer Price Index only went up by 24% to 75%. So I don't understand that. The services have actually been reduced a bit. But I think what we really need to do is have better communication with the sheriff's department, Captain Cracher, to say, how can we establish baseline KPIs? And then also, on the other side, now that we want to measure their key performance indexes, but we also want to have some induceness for them to improve. So we have MBOs, Management by Objectives. We establish those, we have good communication, we have monthly communication with them, and we have good negotiators negotiate the next contract. Because this contract is not negotiated well, and we're now paying the price for that. But I will not disparage the sheriff's office because they do a good job. And I'm thankful for that, for them more than willing to be a negotiator next time and to also be a liaison on a monthly basis. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Clayton Corey.
Thank you. Yes, I am so glad that we are a safer community. Thank you for bringing that up with low cost. We have law enforcement, fire protection, emergency services. We now own our own fire department, and we have a reasonable contract with MCSO. And I think, as I mentioned earlier, the contract allows us to benefit from the services that MCSO can give us locally, but also take advantage of other services that they have. Like, I think I heard the helicopter mentioned. We can't have our own helicopter. Who would? But we can take advantage of those resources that they give us as part of that contract. So it kind of can scale as we need them and the resources go other places as they need them. I would trust MCSO to kind of scale their staff appropriately. We have the lowest per capita cost for them. I think it was around $6 million. And as far as I know, a lot of the issues that we had were part of that contract. So I was very pleased with that. But when it comes to public safety, I think we've also done a few great things. I've seen new crosswalks going up that are illuminated. So if you want to walk across the street, walk your dog to the dog park, you can hit that button, the lights will come on, and you can walk across the street. And I know that there's more than that. I love seeing that. I'm a walker. I also like to ride my bike, so those things are important to me. And, I still have time? And I think just regular maintenance and upgrades. We need to make sure that that part of our infrastructure is always at the forefront just to make sure that it's safe.
Thank you. Moving on to question number three. The Community Economic Development Strategy calls for the town to explore opportunities for redevelopment and revitalization to attract new residents, visitors, and businesses in several key areas in town. The downtown area, spanning from Avenue of the Fountains to Palisades and from La Mentona to Solaro, has many undeveloped lots and vacant storefronts. This presents a unique opportunity for smart growth that will stimulate the local economy. How will you work with the town's Economic Development Department and the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce to revitalize the downtown corridor and create a thriving business district? Next, Matthew Corbin.
Thank you. I think it's a good question about what can we do to develop business. And there are a lot of empty lots downtown. How do we handle it? You mentioned Carsel 208. It's kind of a unique situation of the $100 owners. There is one thing that would and can drive those open lots to be more appropriately used. One of them would be economic stimulus. I would encourage the town to have a more focused approach on reaching out, contacting key economic decision-makers, whether it's a satellite university or maybe a planetary astronomy research institute. We've got the planned, you know, that vision is already there, and that's hopefully coming. We have other opportunities too. We have light industry that can come in. Right now, we have a watchmaker who reacted, or unfortunately, completely restored one of our unused vacant school buildings so they can add a clean lab to make watches. One of the only watchmakers in the country here in Fountain Hills. Now they've got to move because of, you know, a problem that really got some uprooted. But I will tell you something. Downtown development can be tackled very, very easily by maintaining and not restricting those small businesses. Having been a small businessman myself, I don't think we need restrictions on so much permitting and signs. I think we need to go back to that and address the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Rick Watts.
I think there's a variety of things that we can do, and I think they should be done in conjunction with the Chamber. I think that collectively, we could develop a plan, maybe a business model, a business plan for the Platte 208 section. Maybe we can buy that, if the town can somehow acquire, develop. There is no incentive for those owners right now, so we've got to find an incentive. How do we have a conversation with CEOs of corporations again to talk about what we'll produce for the town, how we can produce more jobs, how we can find more opportunity for them to move here, more incentives for them to move here? How about a punch card type of situation with residents, very much like Desert Canyon has a punch card for residents for golf? Not that I know about golf, but you know, they have a punch card, you get a discount. Why can't we do the same thing with the residents for the restaurants in the town, the people on the avenue, and say, there's a 10% discount? That 10% discount will certainly get people to come to your restaurant at least one time, and it will entice other people to come and join here as well. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to innovate. And I think innovation is a business actor component. You have to think about outside the box, how are we going to get something done, not why we can't get something done. And I think that's what I'm back on with coming down.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McKam.
Thank you. And there's been a lot of talk about downtown, and look, there's been a lot being done about that. Recently, you were just invited to participate in a joint event where you could contribute to our new plan for downtown, our strategic plan. So you have provided valuable input, and we're waiting to see what happens so there can be more connectivity, more economic vitality, possibly more stores, more places for you to relax, et cetera. In addition, I know the Chamber and our economic director and business groups are working together to address the Platte 208, vacant land, et cetera, to invite new businesses in there to utilize them and improve them. But for right now, I'm going to let you know that downtown is growing. Have you walked downtown that avenue lately? Have you seen the great, you know, new electric box that's in the building? Park Place? The commercial stores are almost full. There's only 84 left, and they have strong people that are interested in doing that. We just have an annual budget that is over $4 million, and rather than we can see coming. We're going to have a dark sky down there that's going to provide millions of dollars in economic vitality. You know, these are all really positive things. And we are growing, we are taking care of it, and it will be addressed. And we're waiting for your participation and response to the input of the downtown strategy. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Clayton Corey.
Thank you. Oh, I would love to see downtown more vibrant. I know it's getting better, but I think one of the, I think one of the things that we have, you know, we're known for our signature events. We've had a lot of really great signature events. And I think there's opportunities to expand on that, to have more signature events, and maybe even make some of them more multi-day events that would bring people here and keep them here for a few days. They could stay in the motels, shop in the stores, eat the restaurants. I think there's definitely an opportunity there. We're also utilizing the new branding and marketing. Have you seen Naturally Fountain Hills yet? I think it just came out, I just saw some ads for it. So that's really exciting to know that our So, that's really exciting to know that our economic development team is keeping that on the forefront, making sure that that's exciting and fresh and new. People want to see these, these new ideas to move in here. I do have some punch cards for some of the local businesses and I use them. I enjoy that, so I get my free drinks. But I think, but I think one of the biggest things to support downtown is we need the people down there. We really need to bring people downtown, be where they are. I go back to the mixed use because I think that's really important. Bring that downtown, there's people down there, they'll walk around, they'll support the businesses. So, I think we have an opportunity down there and we do have that downtown strategy that's in play right now. I know a lot of people were there and put their red hearts all over the posters, so we'll see what comes out of that.
Thank you. Moving on to our next question, question number four. Fountain Lake is an important component of our town's infrastructure and serves as a reservoir that holds one hundred million gallons of recycled water produced by the sanitary district. The current lake liner was installed in the year two thousand and has a life expectancy of twenty to thirty years. Current estimates show that the replacement is expected to cost fifteen to eighteen million and the town has set aside five million dollars for this project. How would you address this critical project and how would you fund it? Councilmember McMahon.
We've been talking about the lake liner over the last few years and we're aware that we had a test done, we were told it's eventually going to need to be repaired, it's in pretty good shape. So, we're like on hope and prayer right now and hoping that we won't have to address this in a few years because, because it is going to be a lot of money. It is our iconic Fountain Lake and we do have to do something about it. This year, we added a million dollars to the lake liner fund. I'm hoping that our continuing on council that we will be able to do the same. But, you know, it, it is a lot of money. I don't want to say the V O N T word, but you know, if we don't have the money in the budget at the time and just before it needs to be repaired, then that's something we may need to consider. Hopefully not, hopefully we'll be able to plan far in advance to have the majority of that money, if not all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Cory.
I think as far as the Fountain Hills Lake, the warranty is just about, so we're, you know, we're twenty, twenty-five, we're close to that. We just did a twenty twenty-five budget on Tuesday. And I really do think we need, my focus, one of my key focuses is infrastructure, roads, streets, curving sidewalks, and so on. We have to keep in mind that we need to set aside enough reserves to repair that lake liner. We need to hold that money reserve for specific projects and do more of that. And I think a way to do that, and thinking about developing downtown, many of us maybe have forgotten because that lake is there and the fountain is there and it's been such a wonderful drawing card, we've forgotten maybe the importance of maintaining that is our key element here in Fountain Hills. And so, it should be a key priority in the future. We could, you know, it's projected that we could do partial failure, failure events by taking a certain portion of the liner and repairing that as a certain portion's failed. That's probably a good, good foresight. But again, reserves is the key. It's very, very expensive to replace the entire liner. We're all concerned about it, but I think we need to, it is a worth the concern. We need to have set asides and reserves for that particular funding of our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Clayton Cory.
I would agree that it's going to have to be a balance of allocated funds for the right projects. Infrastructure is very important to me as well, of course, there's a lot to infrastructure. So, you know, roads and sidewalks, of course, that's definitely a priority of mine, but like Matthew mentioned, that's our signature trade block, that's what everybody comes here for. So, I think we need to make sure that we are always thinking about keeping that thing alive. If the fountain wasn't going off, then there would be a domino effect. So, we've got to keep that going. But gosh, eighteen million, that's pretty expensive. So, I think we probably need to continue to stash the money away for it and hope that we can make it last as long as we can and then, and then fix it. But, you know, that's where that balance is. We need to put funds towards the lake liner, we do, and then if we need to have a solution to fix some of the streets, then maybe that's, at that point, that's a bond or something. So, we will have to talk about different options.
Thank you. Next is Rick Watts.
I think this is like any other business decision when you're going to do some capital expenditure. You look at what the, the actual cost is going to be, so we look at what the capital expenditure would be for the lake liner. We look at the roads and I hear that the roads are part and parcel, we're putting money aside and we've got it covered, but the roads are actually failing quicker than we can put money aside to fix them. I think twenty years ago, when the lake liner was first installed, we knew that that lake liner had a limited life. That's fundamental to business, knowing what the life expectancy of any product is. And at that point in time, we should have put a reserve account in place that said, we're going to start with ten bucks a month away so that now we have the amount of money that we need. I think we should have a serious conversation about finding out who's going to contribute, whether it's the sanitary district. It earns right that, that the sanitary district has a water, an excess water issue that the reservation won't allow us to dump the water into the river. Where are we going to put that water? But they're contributory to the problem. What do we have saved? What do we need? What's the minimum we want? And I'm not going to be bashful about using the V word, we need a bond. That's what it comes down to. And, but if we face it or not, we don't have the eighteen million, we don't have the fifty or sixty million dollars, we're not going to get it out of the TPT that we've got now. Transaction privilege tax is slightly different than sales tax, it was reduced when we went to TPT. So, when you talk about all these things, it was no forward thinking to anticipate the need twenty years from the date that that liner was put in. That's the issue.
Thank you. Okay, we have one question remaining. Before we jump into that, I want to remind everyone in the audience that inside our program is a QR code. We have limited time tonight, but if you would like to ask any of the candidates additional questions, you can scan that QR code, plug in your question, and we will make sure that it gets the candidate and then they can respond at their discretion. So, we'll now move on to question number five. Why do you want to do this? What skills do you possess that qualifies you for this position and why do you feel like your presence will benefit Fountain Hills? Matthew Cory.
Well, the shorter answer is, I don't, and I didn't want to be a candidate for town council. The way this happened was I started attending town council meetings and started speaking out about different issues in town council and also planning a zoning and school board, which has nothing to do with town council, town council, but I thought I might mention it. And I was actually encouraged by a couple of people to consider running for town council. And I kept saying, no, 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 no. And finally, I said yes because I think there's a truism in the fact that there's a time to speak and there's a time to act. And I think it's important to preserve this town as it is and at the same time, let it grow naturally with the original master plan in mind, honoring the ordinances that we have. And so, I know I can bring those talents that I had in my career by listening to people, giving them solutions to those problems, and I can do that on town council. And that's why I'm in this, because I want to preserve and protect and defend Fountain Hills for the future.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Clayton Cory.
I knew I was going to have to go after that. All right. You know, we are, what we want to be a multi-generational community, right? And I think it's important to have diverse representation on the dais so we represent everybody that wants to live here in Fountain Hills. So, I do want to be on the town council. I have for years. In fact, I wanted to back in twenty nineteen and somebody recommended letting a zoning would be a good stepping stone for you. So, I got involved there and I've been enjoying my time there. But, you know, I, like I said when I did my intro, I met a lot of really great people here in this community. There's so much diversity, so much background. You can learn a lot from people in this town because they've come from some amazing places. And this is a great way to get back to the community. I have, it's funny, I'm on this side of the Toastmasters lights, I haven't been on this side of the Toastmasters lights in a long time, but that was the first service group or organization that I joined in Fountain Hills here. So, you know, everyone's very passionate about this community and I think it takes people from the community to step up and serve the council, to represent everybody here, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you. It's kind of a hard question because there is so many things. You know, I haven't really, really enjoyed serving in a council over the past three and a half years. I would like to provide continuity. I've gained a lot of knowledge. I have, I could utilize my legal experience. I think our county is at the precipice of change, of a positive change. We are going through a process of having greater economic vitality. You know, there's change going on in our community, we're probably going to end up, you know, more younger leadership, we have the opportunities to bring in younger professionals, support our schools. I mean, there are so many things that we have left to be done that represent our community and contribute to our strong sense of community because I've gotten the impression from people I've spoken with that they feel like that's changed and is slipping, but I'm not going to let that happen. We are a great town, we're a viable town, we're a beautiful town, we have a lot to offer and I want to be part of that, teach them, provide solutions, and, and continue representing Fountain Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rick Watts.
Interesting question. So, I've been here for over thirty-five years and it dawned on me when I retired, what now? I didn't have a plan. That was, that scared the heck out of me. So, I started going to town council meetings and it dawned on me, they need my business experience. They need some guiding lights, they need to know how to innovate, they need to know how to motivate and promote people. So, here I am today, and if you'd asked me a year ago, I'd still be here, but if you'd asked me today, I'm not so sure. So, I wonder, what can I do for town council? What can I bring to the table? And it is the business background, it is understanding, it is promoting, understanding the impact, it is the ability to talk to CEOs, bring commercial properties, commercial owners into town, maybe persuading the plot two oh eight folks that there's a better way. So, those types of things. And when you talk about listening to both sides of either argument, I call that objective listening. And objective listening is slightly different than just plain old listening. Objective listening is listening without the intent to refute, is listening with the actual intent to understand, to understand the other person, where they're coming from, what they mean, what they're trying to do, and try to find that middle ground where you can be successful in coming to conclude, not the loop, not the hold fast to your beliefs, but openly listen, pay attention, and find comfort.
Thank you. Okay, I do want to take a moment to thank all the candidates for their thoughtful responses to the questions. We are now going to move into the closing statements and the first up is Rick Watts.
I'm going the other way this time. All right. So, thank you to Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, the FHCCA, and all of you in attendance for joining us tonight, so I could share a bit of myself with you. Please take a few moments to visit my website, rickwattshf.com, learn more about me if you would be a chance. And if you've got any questions, you've got the QR code, I'm happy to answer questions and I don't think anybody's asked me a question that I haven't responded to, so happy to be there. In closing, I ask you that you consider a few additional factors when you make your final decision of who you, who you support for town council. I've earned forty years of business expertise, entrepreneurial spirit, leadership, and new energy. I've run several businesses from startups, turnarounds, to multimillion dollar organizations. I know how to build, lead, and grow companies as well as lead and promote people and will do the same for Fountain Hills. I accomplish these goals through simple application, innovation, motivation, and elevation. There's a number of reasons why organizations and leaders fail to employ as end constituents, but I prefer to focus on how true leaders succeed and suggest that that's exactly what I bring to the table. I will bring confidence to the dais through knowledge and teamwork. I will communicate and be transparent. Leaders cannot over-communicate the intended and unintended consequences of their decisions. I will prepare, study, learn, and know important details along with listening and considering your concerns. I bring ideas along with solutions and details. Objective listening opens the doors to suggestions, alternates, and ultimately solutions. I am determined to support and protect our town. I'll lead by example to bring real civility to the council, to convince and work with my fellow councilmen so that together we can accomplish more for our town and our residents. If equality is supported by my proven track record for what you are looking for in a town council representative, then I ask for your vote, I ask you to vote for me as your candidate of choice. I can do, can and do will the hard work, but need your support, donations, to get the word out to all registered voters in Fountain Hills so that they know who I am, why I'm running, and how I can better serve the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Cory.
I'm running for town council here in Fountain Hills, not as someone who's inside politics. I've never run for political office before. This is my first shot and earlier I said honestly, why do you want to run for town council? I'm not sure any of us want to run for town council. I certainly didn't, but there's a need and that's what my focus is. There's a need in this town to keep Fountain Hills safe and secure. There's a need to keep that dream for this gem in the desert. We can do that in many ways. Just as I provided solutions in my career as a sales, district sales manager, I can bring those solutions to this town of Fountain Hills. We've talked about a number of ways to do that, I've talked about some, and I can do that if, and I will work hard for you and I will fight for you, but I do need your support and I do need your vote. If you believe in some of the things that I believe in, then vote for me as your candidate. There's eight, there's seven other candidates up here with similar ideas, but some are different. But if I'm your candidate and remember that I want to ensure public safety, I want our infrastructure to be rebuilt, and that includes the lake liner, the roads, the streets, the sidewalks, everything, they need to do it correctly. I can do that, I can bring this down to solutions. I'm confident I can do it and if you share my beliefs and my confidence, I would appreciate it if you voted. I have rat cards over on the table and I do have yard signs, just ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight and I appreciate it and I appreciate your support. And as you know, I am passionate service. I dedicate my time across the spectrum, around town voluntary, serving on different committees and participating in many events in town. You know, I, I really, really want to continue the continuity on, on council. I'm a dedicated servant, I have your best interest at heart. I realize through all the questions that we have tonight and listening to some of the answers, that we, I still have a lot of work to do and I want to be part of our future because I know we have a brighter future where we can be very, very successful. And we need to, you know, look at our school and support them, we're supporting our businesses, we're growing our businesses. There's just so much to do yet and I really want to be part of those solutions. And I also want to make sure that we continue to have a strong identity and strong sense of community. So, thank you very much and I look forward to serving again in council.
Thank you. Next, Clayton Cory.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here today. Thank you for your engagement in the community and your passion for coming to the forum. Campaigning has been a lot of fun. In fact, I've even been out on my bicycle, meeting people who are washing their car or walking their dog. And I've met so many wonderful people who, not everybody shares the same views as me, but in most cases, we each have a great conversation about our town. And a theme that I heard from everybody, as you've heard tonight, is I love Fountain Hills. That's my little logo too. And I want to say that I think there's more that unites us as a community than we might think. Our town's strength lies in our diversity, our unity, and our shared commitment to making Fountain Hills a better place for everyone. And I want to say, I believe that we, as a community, we can take ownership of sending that message out to Fountain Hills. Having civic participation, being friendly, and always talking positively about Fountain Hills, that will go a really long way and help us keep this town vibrant. We can do a lot personally, just individual people, so I wanted to highlight that. And, gosh, we didn't- And, gosh, we didn't have a whole lot of time to share everything tonight, but if you'd like some of the things that I had to say, I would encourage you to visit my website. It's claytoncorrey.com. And thank you. Please stay cool out there, hydrate, and I don't know if there's any Kool-Aid on there, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our candidate, town council candidate forum. I used to work in politics. I worked for a council in Los Angeles. So before we move forward, I want everyone to give a round of, a round of applause for each candidate. Thank you. It takes a lot of courage to get up here and thoughtfully answer questions. So before I pass the mic over to Betsy La Boy, I do want to thank all of you for attending tonight, and I would encourage you to check out ilovefountainhills.com to learn more about the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association. Again, we've got more than 15 member organizations, and there are a lot of great programs, of which civic affairs is one of them. At this point, I will turn it over to Betsy to offer some closing remarks on her behalf. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Jack. Ladies and gentlemen, I do want to point out that QR code. We will relay all the questions that you have that perhaps weren't answered to the candidates and set their discretion to answer those. As we conclude our 2024 Town Council Candidate Forum, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to everyone in attendance tonight. Your engagement and commitment to the future of our community is truly inspiring. A special thank you goes to our candidates for your participation, your willingness to share your visions and ideas for our town, for Fountain Hills, as a testament to your dedication to public service and our town's continued growth and prosperity, and would really appreciate it all of you for willing. On your way out this evening, if you'd like to pick up some of the candidates collateral, we encourage you to do so. Before we close, I'm pleased to announce the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors will soon be presenting, pardon me, the 2024 Legislative Report. This comprehensive report is based on interviews with candidates and board members as well as detailed written questionnaire. This report will be published online and will review key issues within the scope of our chambers work, providing valuable insights and information for your community, for our community for your review. Thank you once again for being here tonight and for your ongoing support of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, the FHCCA, the town of Fountain Hills. Together, we are building a brighter future. Thank you.